Ladies and gentlemen, it's time to start our meeting. I'd like to officially call to order the Madison County Planning Commission business session for May the 21st, 2019 to order. And I ask our Secretary to call roll, please.
Alan Hatfield.
Here.
Doug Fritz.
Here.
Shannon Pennington.
Here.
Robert Farmer.
Here.
Paula Miachi.
Here.
Drew Alexander.
Here.
Roy Switzer.
Let the record show, we do have a quorum. And first oral business is approval of the minutes for April the 17th. Everyone should receive a copy of the minutes in the package. Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes as received? If not, we'll have a vote.
I'll make a motion we approve the minutes.
You have a motion?
I'll second.
Have a motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll have a vote.
Robert Farmer.
Yes.
Shannon Pennington.
Yes.
Doug Fritz.
Yes.
Alan Hatfield.
Yes.
Roy Switzer. Drew Alexander.
Yes.
Paula Miachi.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, before you get started on these items, I just want, just to, for the record, first of all, thank the City of Richmond for hosting us. Apologize to everybody for having to change the location of the meeting. And then just for the record, Marty, if you want to show them just a couple of pictures of the signs that we took up, that we posted, front door of the courthouse, back door of the courthouse, and on the physical courtroom itself, as well as a couple of signs on the doors out here, just want to make those part of the record, so there's no confusion about the advertising and the mix-up. The reason is the primary election tonight, so the clerk's office is using the physical courtroom. So the city was nice enough to let us move up here and use their chambers.
Okay. All right, next oral business, minor plat, 265 Horseshoe Bend. Bert, you want to?
I'll come up.
Okay.
This is the same plat that we looked at at the work session. I think this is the third way to that down. We may relate a little bit to the original approval subdivision of that 265 Horseshoe Bend. Do you have any questions?
Dwayne Wheatley, advocate of Centurion. I'm here with Dr. Martin, owner of the property. He was wishing to cut off the tract around the lake, as we discussed in the meeting. And I know you all had some concerns about that, so Dr. Martin's here today to address any kind of concerns that you all might have with that.
Yeah.
Thank you. One of the things we're doing, we have, like, the lots are there. You can't have more than seven houses for the seven lots. I've got, like, three sons, and I'm trying to move in. One's already bought one tract, and my other son's wanting to buy the tract next to the lake, but my other son would like to use the lake too, and I've got another lot for my other son I'm trying to get over there, seven and a half acres. And so if I could have that separate, it would be in my name. I would fence it and have the responsibility and liability for it. And then my son would buy the lot, it's already approved, next to it, 9.8 acres, instead of a 12 that includes the lake. And Pam Sloman, and Joe Norman, and James Harden, and my three sons, hopefully, will be able to all to use it, instead of just having one person buy it and own it. Then at my demise, it would go to my three sons and the people on the lake. So we're, I'm just, it's kind of a family thing, and hopefully, it would be for the use of the seven homeowners, and no increase in houses or anything else. One of the things concerned was liability, so I would have the liability insurance on it, and I would fence it and post the signs for it. So that's why I was asking if we could, instead of the 12-something acres that includes the pond, make it 9.8 for my son, John Martin, to buy, so he can move there. And I'm next door. I'm just 100 yards down. So that was one of the reasons I was trying to separate the pond off. Yes.
Dr. Martin, why can't John buy the whole piece and let people use the pond?
Well, I've got three sons, and I also got four, there'll be four neighbors there. And all of them, Pam Sloman's walking up the road. I was mowing yesterday, and she said, "I love this pond. I'm so thankful that you let us use it." And it's kind of, my son would, can't afford the pond. The pond costs 15,000 bucks to dig and put a boat dock on it. And adding that to the other acreage, it, even I'm gifting him, like, 15,000 dollars. So I'm just trying to have it where, if my other son comes over from Winchester, James, there'll be all three sons on the farm, plus there'll be seven total.
But there's no legal.
And that way they all could use it.
Excuse me, there's no legal reason that your son cannot grant access to that pond to everybody in that subdivision if he chose to do so.
It, it's, the wild people, it's liability insurance and the cost, and I could have the seven homeowners sign a waiver, and I would be responsible for mowing it, and chemicals and stuff to treat it, and all that. And so I'm just trying to use it for the pleasure of everyone there, but it is just making it more affordable. I went to the bank, and they said that it would be for him, they would approve him for the 9.8 acres, even with the gift that we're giving to him for the down payment.
But you're cutting off a pond that can't be done nothing with unless you feel it incorrect?
Yes.
Well, don't you join the lot that joins it?
James Harden owns one side, and my son will be buying the lot next to it.
James, Indiana Martin, you join it, right?
No, I'm not, I'm not sure. My, I live down the road in, we have a little farm on down the road, 16 and a half acres, about 100 yards from that.
But it says your neighbor is James Harden.
James Harden, Joe Norman, Pam Sloman.
The remainder of tract three.
My son, Joe Martin, and then John and James Martin.
But you know that that constitutes a remnant. That pond would be a land remnant, because it is not buildable and not usable as a building lot, unless you fill the pond in.
Well, we didn't want to build anything on it. We didn't want to, because we knew we couldn't increase the number of houses on the property. It would just be for the general use.
I mean, making it into a lot constitutes a remnant and nonusable, and that's against the regulations to create a lot that is a remnant, a nonusable lot.
Okay.
Now, also, on the original plat, I believe there was a note saying that any further division, that road would be brought up to county standards, and this would be considered a division.
We did do that. We put a cohort in and widened the road and gravelled it, and...
We're talking about the railroad, Elliston Road.
Oh, the Blacktop Road, yes. If we, if we made more lots than the seven original, we had three lots originally, and then after two years, we're able to divide that again. And they said if we increased the number of lots, we'd have to pave the road all the way down to the Waco Bank Building, and run a six-inch water line. And we've got a four-inch water line. That farm goes all the way down to Meadow Brook Farm.
But that's a legal note that Mr. Wheatley failed to include on the new plat that the planning commission was going to be looking at, and it has to be included on the new plat. And it says, "There will be no further subdivision unless you bring Elliston Road up to 20 feet," which would be 16 feet, 20 feet?
I to, I understand.
And a six-inch water line.
And I appreciate your consideration, and it's no, it's just, hopefully, I could, I could do that, have it, and then the people, everybody that's out could enjoy and use it.
Well, unless this property is a piece of someone else's property, either a home or another farm, what happens when you're gone?
Then I would leave the property to my three sons, and I could state in that that the people that are there, they could have access and use it.
What's the difference between doing it now and doing it when you're dead?
Well, the thing is, is just trying to have it where I'm equitable with three sons and giving them all the same advantage of, I'm trying, before I'm gone, I'm trying to give them money to help them buy the property, and I've got three different sons, so that's why I'm doing, if I add that up, it becomes uneven with my son, Joe. And then James, which there's seven and a half acres left for James. So it's just more or less keeping them close to home, and having something for them to use, and I've got 12 grandkids for them to use. And I've got friends for them to use, like Pam, and Joe, and James. It's just, it's almost like a little recreational area that we could put some paddle boats in, and they go down and fish, and...
Yeah, but there's really no reason you couldn't do that right now. There's no legal reason that you could not do that right now.
I can't do it without the, my son can't buy that. He doesn't have the income to buy the property with the lake, even though I'm giving him the same amount of money I gave my other son.
But you could give him the property.
As a gift.
It's not buildable. It's a useless, it's a useless remnant, so you could give him the property. It's a useless remnant.
Okay, well, then, I've got, again, I've got three sons. You know what I'm talking about. You could do with one, you'd do the same for all of them. But I, I understand. I just...
What would be the difference between this recreational area and then the recreational area in Dove's Landing or Double D Meadows?
Those have homeowners associations that take over those, regardless of who is alive and who is dead.
We have homeowners association, and all have a vote, and they just said they didn't want liability, they want me to have it, so I would keep the insurance and maintain it.
The other thing is, is there's a very clear regulation, Regulation 109, that says we do not grant waivers unless there's an exceptional, unique, physical, human condition. We don't grant waivers for financial gain or financial loss, or, so there's no reason here to grant a waiver. Plus, there's the note that you did not include on this plat, Mr. Wheatley, saying there would be no subdivision unless Elliston Road was made to comply with the county's regulation and a six-inch water line. And we put that note on a lot of plats.
Yes.
And we hold people to that note.
That's not a problem for us to add, either.
Yeah, and...
We'd be more than glad to put that on there.
No, it should have been on this plat, because the planning commission would then have said, wait a minute, there's a note.
I didn't remember that from the, I'm sorry.
There's a note on the original plat, January 14th, 2011, that Dr. Martin signed and agreed to that, that he would not do any subdivisions until you brought Elliston Road up to par, and you put in a six-inch water line. That's a legal note. It should have applied, it should have been, you should have transferred it to the plat that this planning commission, Robert and I were here in 2011, the other folks were not. So the other folks had no knowledge that there was a note until we pulled up Plat Book 26, page 17. So it was a disadvantage to the planning commission to not know that there was a legal prohibition against further subdivision.
Doc, is there anything we can do? Is there some kind of conservancy or something he can put and assign to that lot that says it can never be built on?
Well, you couldn't build, Bert, you couldn't build on it anyway. There's no place to build with that pond. By the time you do all your setbacks, you don't have room for a tool shed.
That's right. So it's not really an additional building like that.
It's a remnant.
And what we're, but what we'd be concerned about is, you keep saying they want you to have the liability, they want you to maintain it, but so what happens when you're not there? And the county starts getting complaints, and the gas bill starts growing up, and the fences is not being painted, and the water docks start sweeping in.
Yes.
Who, they call us, and we have to say, "Well, I'm sorry, that's private property. The county's not going to maintain that." And then they get mad at us for not doing it. So our concern is, do we maintain that beyond your years and beyond your son's years for that matter?
Yes, yes.
So you say you have homeowners association, but sometimes those are simply just not effective. So it almost would be neat, be like, there needs to be some kind of agreement on the plat itself, and said that the owners of property in this development are responsible for maintaining the lot. And it needs to be on the plat, so if somebody buys a lot in there, and they do their due diligence, they know that that note's on there, they're going to be responsible for maintaining that, similar to the notes you have on there.
1/7 of the road. Yeah, 1/7 of the road. I could get...
I'm not speaking for the planning commission, but if we're not creating a building lot, and the maintenance is maintained, they may have a little better figure about it.
Bert, 213-16 says you will not grant a waiver that in effect nullifies the intent and purpose of the regulations.
If you're not granting a waiver, you're overriding your own note that you added to the plat. You were here, you agreed to that note. Now, is that a waiver to then override your own note?
Overriding that note is a waiver. That is, that requires a waiver. And we also are, would be ignoring 305.5. If a remnant of land exists after subdividing and has apparently no future property control, it shall be incorporated into another lot. So we have to decide, and I said this at the workshop, we have to decide if we're a planning commission that follows the regulation for all sentences of Madison County, or we're a waiver commission. And I don't see us as...
Trying to see if there's a way to make it more valuable, do you?
I think the only way that, in my...
The only way you all need to decide is you want to proceed as is, or if you want to withdraw it, and try to twink it a little bit. Obviously, you can kind of take the pulse of the commission here. If they vote on it tonight, and it locks you up for a year, you wouldn't be able to bring it back. If you withdraw it, and think there may be a better way to go about it, and present something different at another business session, then that would be an option, too.
Okay.
You mean, just make a word into where, put it in HOA in the future, or do something?
Well, I'd have to go, I'd have contact everybody and say, "Would you be responsible for that and put it in the deed?" So...
You probably want to get everybody in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
I'm just going to suggest it out there. I'm not saying this will work.
I understand.
You probably want to get the people, the current property owners, in there to sign it, at this time, saying they understand it as property owners of that development. I don't know if that would...
I appreciate your time. I understand what you're reading, and it's written, it's for the good of everybody, and I appreciate it, and I will withdraw my petition at this time, and I thank you for, and I understand it, Bert, myself. I do know about the road, and it's 1/7, and I'm glad it's in there, because the guy on the front just helped pay him for a mile of road, and, you know, but thank you again.
Okay, next on our agenda is minor plat for Runyon Grove. Bert, you want to bring us up to speed for the work session?
Yeah, you want to come on up and tell us what we did on that one? Tell us what you did on that one.
Property is essentially the same. The only addition to the plat was the note that was requested by the planning commission. Hope I hit the mark on that, I trust. Basically saying there's an existing 10-foot gravel drive in the county right-of-way accessing the farm. Privately maintained, and intends to be maintained privately, with no assistance from the county, unless that road is brought up to county standards, which would be 20 feet wide, blacktop. No further division of the track until the gravel drive is upgraded. I think that was the only issue we had with the property. If there needs to be any revision to the note, I'd be happy to do what we need.
See, actually, the county maintenance stops quite a bit before you get to this property.
I'm guessing a couple of hundred feet prior to this property. And then there's the gravel drive on a, the county right-of-way continues all the way out to Hunter Lane, but it's unimproved. It's actually grown up, you can barely walk through parts of it, but...
The recollection is that we asked you to put on this plat, "There shall be no further division," okay?
Yeah, he did that, though.
No gravel drive is upgraded to county road standards by the developer. By the developer.
Okay. To county road standards by the developer. Okay?
Was there any other concerns we had? I can't recall any others. Now, this right-of-way, this is not county-owned, is it? Is this a county-owned right-of-way? All the way through to where?
All the way to Hunter Lane, yeah.
So how much farther will that be?
Wow, that's probably...
Pretty good piece.
I'd say a half mile, again, I'm guessing.
I'd say a half mile, that's right.
You don't know if there's any, any plans to ever open that up all the way through to make another access road?
None I'm aware of.
They tell you there's no plans to do that this time.
By the county. Okay. Okay, any further discussion or comments from the commission? So you want to hear the audience here to address this minor plat? Okay, if not, then I'll open the floor for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minor plat of Runyon Grove with the addition of those words to the plat.
By the developer.
By the developer.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion to approve this minor plat as submitted with the addition of the wording in the "No Further Division" statement. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any further discussions? If not, we'll have a vote.
Alan Hatfield.
Yes.
Doug Fritz.
Yes.
Shannon Pennington.
Yes.
Robert Farmer.
Yes.
Paula Miachi. Drew Alexander.
Yes.
Roy Switzer.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda is a minor plat for 564 Mount Vernon Road.
This is Jay. Also, Jay, if you want to just bring him up to speed on this one, too.
Please. And this is the second property we saw at the work session. Very similar to the other. There's an existing county right-of-way with an existing gravel drive in it. The same note has been placed on. I'm assuming we need to add the words "by the developer" to this one also.
Right.
The only addition to this one is we're asking for the waiver to be less than an acre. These properties are on city sewer, and currently, the county regulations don't address how to handle property under an acre without the waiver. So the note requesting the waiver has been provided on the drawing, too.
Okay, anyone have any questions or comments for Mr. Webb? Anyone of the honors here to address this minor plat? Okay, if not, then I'll open the floor for a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the plat as written with the additions of the...
By the developer.
Correct. That 564 Mount Vernon Road be approved as written.
Okay, have a motion to approve that addition of the wording on the "No Further Development." Is that, was there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Have a motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll have a vote.
Drew Alexander.
Yes.
Paula Miachi.
Yes.
Robert Farmer.
Yes.
Shannon Pennington.
Yes.
Doug Fritz.
Yes.
Alan Hatfield.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next on our agenda is a zone change.
Mr. Chairman, let's make the record know what time it is, just so we can, anybody that may have gone to the courthouse, should have had time to make their way up here by now, if they did go down there by mistake, since we are to the park that was advertised. If you can just, for the record, I don't have my phone with me. 54. So we're about 25 minutes after the meeting. Valerie Himes, the representative.
Okay, has all the proper notification been made for the...
Yeah, I've been on property for a couple of weeks, past thousand, paper, note of letters to the surrounding property owners.
Okay, are you legal counsel?
I am.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, I'm Valerie Himes. I'm an attorney with Luxon and Hudson. I represent the owner of the property, DS and JV Properties LLC. And also, to add to the record, my client has an individual standing right in front of the fiscal courtroom with a sign that the meeting has been moved to this location as well. So we have filed our application to rezone approximately 80 acres of vacant land out off Marbury Road. The current zoning is R7, and we are requesting the zone change to R1B. We feel very strongly that the requested zone change is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. I spent quite a bit of time looking through it. It identified an area listed for potential growth in our county for single-family residential use. Growth in our county is expected in the area surrounding what's identified as the urban corridor, so it falls in that area that we anticipated in the comprehensive plan for growth. It, the comprehensive plan acknowledges that the future of farming unfortunately looks less certain, and it states that housing units will need to be built in the county to support the estimated population growth. The properties located adjacent to and near other properties that have been developed and are utilized as single-family residential housing. The infrastructure is already in place. On the face of their application, we were able to show that all the infrastructure's already in place, and I think sewer is 100 to 300 feet available in Estonia Estates. When you're accessing 52 from the property, there's already a stoplot there. There's multiple ways to get from the property to 52. The topography and the layout of this property, it's beautiful. It's very suitable for single-family residential uses. We also feel like the current zoning of R7 is inappropriate, and the new requested zoning of R1B is appropriate. There's other single-family residential developments in the area. Some of those more recent ones are Dove's Landing and Double D Meadows. Again, it's an area that's identified for growth, given its location and good access and the nature of the surrounding area being converted to residential. We feel like the requested zone change is the most appropriate for the property.
Let the record show out, I don't know if it made it clear when we had our open statement. This is zone R7, and we're, the request is for R1B. Now, that is...
It's actually RC, Mr. Chairman.
I was, I was looking at the application.
Mm-hmm, I had double-checked that.
R1B.
R1B.
If you go into that, I...
It would be Ralph et Tuin, his corridor, but it's not.
It's not.
Oh, 52, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't see that.
It's 52, you don't...
That's exactly.
I might be able to help you if you can tell me where to go. I can't see, I cannot see that far.
That's what we looked up.
Yeah, we looked it up when we filed it.
Do you know if sewer has been confirmed to be available to this property?
We, we think it's in Estonia Estates, which is 100 to 300 feet away.
Could you just speak on the microphone, please?
And I also have the member, one of the members of DS and JV Properties is, you don't need to be rude, sir, is available here, too, so I'll ask him to come up, as well as Jay Webb, the surveyor.
It's on.
So is that, that is the proper zoning, R7 to R1B?
Yeah, R7, R1B, and the B designates the density of the lots, which sewer will be required for that density.
But it would be residential type?
Residential, high-density.
Yeah.
R1 would be residential.
You can see that gray line, that's the, that's the rural corridor with it.
Yeah.
You see it?
The green one, there?
It's just outside of the rural, yeah, earlier outside of there.
It actually, it joins, doesn't it, adjacent to it?
That just part is.
Okay. Any commission members have any questions or comments?
What do you say about sewer?
It is nearby 100 to 300 feet in Estonia Estates, and I have Jay Webb here with Central Kentucky Land Surveying, and he has informed me that he is...
Jay, before you speak, I need to, before you end, you swear to tell the truth, hold the truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, continue. State your name and address for the record.
Jay Webb, 213 Pauline Drive, Berea, Kentucky.
Okay, you can go ahead and answer that question.
Sure. We have multiple ways to get sewer to the property. The closest is Estonia Estates. Actually, just across the rear, there's an adjoining farm to us. We're currently working on trying to obtain an easement through. If that doesn't work out, we will have to pump up Old Urban Road to the current pump station. station. There are multiple ways to sewer this farm, but the hopeful route is 200 to 300 feet away of gravity line without pumping. We'll have internal pump stations on the property when it's developed, just to get...
This is the city of Richmond?
No, it's Madison County.
In Madison County.
Yes.
Okay.
Part of the new project that's been going on in the area. Been informed they have just upgraded that pump station to be sure it will handle more development. So, it's went from a single-phase pump to a three-phase pump.
Okay, what about the water situation?
There's water line up Marbly Road currently feeding Rose Trace and Shady Oaks.
What's the size of that water?
Six-inch water line.
So, it is large enough to have fire flow if required?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the question? Okay, at this time, does anyone in the audience like to come up and address this land use change? Yes, sir. Please come up and state your... Well, I need to swear you in first. Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Bob Moody, 946 C. S. T. Drive, Richmond.
Okay, I need to swear you in. Please raise your right hand.
Well...
Please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
I got wind of this zone change a couple of days ago, and I'm not here to object to it in any means. I want to make the commission aware of the fact that there is a Indian mound on this property, and there are a lot of federal laws may apply to disturbing native American graves. And I'd invite you to go out there and take a look at it. It was dug in the late 1880s or 90s some winter by a man by the name of Bennett Young. I say dug. I should use the word butchered, but anyway, he excavated it according to the techniques at the time, which are a lot different now. It does contain human graves. It is a native American graveyard, and probably some... I haven't had time to look it up, but probably some federal laws apply to this. I would like to ask the developers, when they come back with a plan or a plat, to take this into consideration and make some kind of... Do some kind of preservation efforts with it. If you go out there and look at it, and you go onto the Fairgrounds property, and I believe if you sit in the stands, it's just right over the fence. You're familiar with it. I don't remember how tall it is, and it's one of those Adena Indian mounds, 2,000 years old, which may have had a moat around it for some... Which is probably something for mourners to come sit on while they were burying their dead. Anyway, but it is a cemetery. Some other laws might apply with it. I'd just like for you to take that into consideration. I'm not speaking against the zone change.
Is it on a historical register, or do you...
I can't answer that. Well, of course, it's a listed site with the Kentucky Heritage Commission, historic site, and it's a very famous site. Bennett Young, actually, about half of his book on prehistoric men in Kentucky is about this Indian mound. And lately, some articles have appeared in the Kentucky Explorer, which were excerpted out of that book. But I think we all owe it, you know, to our descendants to do something to preserve this in some form or fashion. It doesn't need to be built... A bulldoze, it doesn't need to be built on. Some other consideration needs to be given. I'd be glad to talk with the landowners about it.
Bert, when this call...
We do have some requirements in our subdivision regulation that specifically deal with cemeteries and how developers have to handle those.
I had them put in there 40 years ago.
If we can get the information that says that's what it is, I'm sure if the zone change is approved, that that issue will be addressed at a...
Okay. I realize I'm speaking to the... I'm in the right church, but I'm in the wrong pew. I can come back.
Yeah.
I didn't know about this till a couple of days ago, when I was coming back from Irvin Eaton at Michael's.
Yeah. We do that. We had somebody else to talk to, our ancient eyes coming out there and looking at it, too. You can see it from the back of the fairgrounds back there, so we're aware of it, and developers are aware of it, and I'm sure we'll deal with it at...
There are a lot of ways to mitigate the damages to it, and I'd be glad to help you with it.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing me.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I'm glad to, because I have something to add on that particular topic as well. Your owner, developer, is aware that he has a national important cemetery on his land?
Well, I do believe that...
He could possibly do something about it.
That once somebody dropped off information to the planning and zoning office, we, of course, did everything that we could to look into it, to try and identify as much information as we could. And I have unearthed a good number of... I unearthed Mr. Bennett's book that you referenced as...
Young.
Young, I'm sorry. Bennett Young's book, and I have a portion of it that deals with his excavation of the site, and also, a news report that said that he didn't... He completely destroyed it, or took it down, or excavated everything that's in it, to where, according to the news article, there was nothing left. But it has been excavated, and I have the excerpts from his book that said that he did it. Okay, but in his book, he did say he excavated it and did say, you know, what he found in the mound, and that book is published and available, and I have appropriate pages from it.
Didn't say in the book that he excavated the whole site, just did a couple of diggings on it?
In the book, it just said he excavated it. I'm not an excavation or an archaeologist, but I just read what he had written.
But still, yet it's there, whether he excavated it or not.
It was trashed, and that part is right. There's still good parts of it.
If I may also add, that caused us to go back in the deed room and search extensively to make sure that there was no record that we could find. We found absolutely nothing in the record referencing it in the clerk's records. What we did find was there has been a subdivision across 52. It's East 52 Developers, and there is an Indian mound referenced on that property, and it goes back to the same chain of title to the Riley family.
I assume that you've made your client aware that the planning commission can ask him, as part of his development plan, have an archaeological survey done. We have done that with other... Lot of others have done EPA surveys, and we have required many kinds of surveys, whether natural environment or historical. So, it is possible we would ask him to have an archaeological survey done to see if indeed everything is gone, or he is sitting on an important archaeological site.
If I may, may I present to the commissioners the excerpts from the Bennett Young publication for you to see?
The general planning commission may ask him to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, that will all be as part of the preliminary development of the site development plan.
This is a small part of the acreage of the property itself.
Yeah.
We don't try very hard to...
Right. Yeah.
Would it be about an acre? I'd say it's probably about right. Maybe not quite that big, but it's probably close, yeah.
And in 1B, a minimum of 20% of open area is required for this development, while 50% of the required open space shall be usable places designated for specific use. Be a 1B when he comes to us, we're going to say, "What is your 20% that you're not putting houses on?" So, this might be part of...
That would be helpful, yes.
That'd be part of your green space.
That'd be part of your green space, yeah.
Okay. Is that all you have?
It is.
Is that all you have, sir?
Thank you, yes.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you for coming. Yes, sir. Please come up to the podium, and I'll need to swear you in. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Steve Riley. My address is 5312 Peachtree Drive, Berea, Kentucky.
Okay. Please raise your right hand. Let me swear you in. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, sir, you can go ahead.
I'm... I was a landowner of that property. It's been in my family for 73 years, and it is an Indian mound, and whenever I sold the farm, it was... My understanding was it was going to stay a farm, but things have changed, so I didn't have nothing in writing about any kind of restrictions or anything like that. But I think this mound needs to be protected. Need to put a fence or something around it, or something to protect it some way, because it's getting pretty congested out there in that area, and it needs something, you know, done to protect this mound. It's a part of history, and a lot of people can learn a lot of things about it, and it might be good, maybe they put an amusement park there or something, and, you know, and charge admission, and have, you know, a lot of other different things there, and have it where they could pay to go look at this mound and stuff like that.
Well, that would change your...
I just don't think it should be destroyed, you know? And, of course, you know, once it's gone, it's gone. You can't bring things like that back, you know? It's gone.
Right.
And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Jack Van Wickel, 3179 Irvin Road. I am the developer of the property.
And you need to swear you in, Jack. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
When it come to the... That come to us that there was some record of some type of Indian burial site, it's not been confirmed, whether it is or not, but if it is, I've already took, in my steps, in my development, I've already designated two parks, which would be named after Indian tribes, and all the streets are also named after different Indian tribes, and I don't have any problem whatsoever designating an area. Whoever can find the area, I'm all for it. It just actually enhances my development. I just use that to my advantage.
Yeah. He will have to give access to that, right? If it is a...
It is actually a cemetery. He has to...
You know, we'll treat it just like a regular cemetery. We'll do what's necessary. We'll have it maintained. There'll be an HOA. The HOA will maintain it when I'm yours to... When I'm gone.
Okay.
So, I have no problem. Actually, I'm all for it, so...
Yeah. It's a little bit getting the cart before the horse, but I think they're acknowledging...
I need to say my name.
Right.
I want everybody to know that I'm not for bulldozing Indian artifacts or skeleton bodies. I don't want no part of that, so...
That's good. Most Indian mounds don't take up more than a...
It's not, yes.
If 20% of your development has to be open area, it won't take a lot of land.
But our... I guess our issue is that we... Everyone says that that's the Indian burial mound, but we can't find, you know, any record showing that that's the exact... You know, that that's it. You know, there's one across the road, and it said... It's noted in the book as the Marbly mound. There's a lot of acres in Marbly, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
But if somebody comes and said, "Well, that's it, so be it." You know, I'm satisfied that that can be it. But my opinion, there's a pond dug right above it on top of the ground, being dug years ago. My opinion, that mound there is the dirt that come out of the pond, you know? But if they want to call it an Indian burial mound, we'll call it an Indian burial mound, and we'll designate it as a cemetery. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Is anyone else in the audience here to address this land use change? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Roseanne House, and I live at 493 Maple Grove Road, Richmond, Kentucky.
Okay, please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Continue.
I guess I am here as president of the Madison County Fair Board, and we do oppose the zoning change. If you all are familiar with Fairgrounds, well, you know, our purpose is to promote agriculture in Madison County. Excuse me. As a matter of fact, our bylaws call for that. We are to help educate people in agriculture. I know everybody says it's a dying industry, but a lot of us on the board, which we have 23 members, and a lot of the board members are farmers, or we raise horses, lots of different things, and we would like to see that property left to be agriculture in order to... Who's going to teach our kids about farming if we don't? We... Our Fairgrounds is used... Excuse me. We have 4H, FFA, we have all kinds of cattle shows, horse shows, and everything out there to promote agriculture. So, we wanted to, as a board, go on record as saying that we do oppose the zoning change.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else in the audience has maybe a different input? Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Ronnie Smith, 2174 Mile Road, Richmond, Kentucky.
Okay, please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, sir.
I'm worried about the water. I own 30 acres that joins this property. I don't have no problem with them developing it, but I'm on the downhill side of this, and Roseanne, I love you to death, but I get a lot of water from that fairgrounds. It's the water issue on me. My farm can't take much more water, and I don't know what direction it's going to go.
Yeah. Bert, would you like to say what's about the drainage?
Yeah, I just... Jay, we'll get Jay back up there, too. I mean, our regulations require any development... Water can't leave the property any faster than it did pre-development. So, add the additional areas in, ponds, tanks, whatever the case may be, to collect that water, and all we let it out is at the same speed or volume that it would have prior to the development. So, what you're getting now should be what you're getting after the development's done.
Well, was Fairgrounds exempt?
Fairgrounds has been there. It was pre... It was developed and put out there prior to any kind of planning commission or any kind of county-wide regulation. So, yeah, you probably are getting some from them, even though there are a lot of gravel. You do have a lot of roofs out there. It probably does run off a little faster, but that was done before we had this body. Anything that's done from now on has to meet the current regs.
Okay. One other thing is, I don't know exactly how much property line joins it. Probably 800, maybe 1,000 feet. What about the fence? Lot of houses going to back up to my property. What about the fencing on this?
Regulations require the fence between agriculture land and single-family residential land. That'll be part of the site development plan as to whether or not that requirement, how it's enforced.
And one other thing, we're on this Indian mound. Ever since I was a kid, I've always been told that was Indian mound. I was also told that eastern archaeologists went out there, looked around in it, so you might get some records from eastern, but...
Yes, so, to Mr. Van Wickel's credit, as soon as we found out about it, we contacted him. He was in the office the next day, asked us about what did he need to do. He's been very reactive to it. He seems to be open to whatever he needs to do. I don't have a reason to doubt that he'll do it.
But I'm not... I'm not objecting to the zone change, so, okay. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your input. Anyone else there in the audience may have a different comment, or... Yes, sir. Please your name and address, sir.
My name is John Heimlich. I'm at 117 Shady Oaks, Richmond, Kentucky.
Okay. Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay, continue.
This might be an elementary question. I'm sure it is for the people here. What does it mean when it says "single residential high density," and how many residences are supposed to go up in there? And when is the access road going to be there? Because that's a teeny little road on Marbly.
Well, all that'll be addressed when we do... If we approve the zone change, all that'll be addressed as part of the preliminary plat.
Some kind of...
So they'll have to come back, lay it all out, then we'll have to look at it, we'll have to address the drainage, the access entrance to it, all those issues.
I also have concerns about the drainage. I'm on the corner in Marbury, on Shady Oaks, and as it is now, I get a lot of runoff from the farm. And two and a half years ago on Christmas Day, I spent three hours trying to clean out the drains so it didn't flood the rest of the properties. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, is anyone else? Please state your name and address for the record.
Jason Brandenburg, 1293 Marbury Road, Richmond.
Okay. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Continue, sir.
Okay, thank you. We really, being a resident, we, on Marbury Road, from what we can gather, not everybody, you know, there wasn't a huge amount of letters that went out, and my property backs up to Shady Oaks and Rose Trace, so of course, everybody started talking and we have some opposition. More traffic, obviously, through, we're here, we don't know, like you said, you'll lay that out, we'll know how many homes go in there, but what we've heard is like a quarter acre lot, so three, 250 to 300 homes in that field. So the Marbury Road, if you've been on it, it's dangerous already, but you bring 300 more homes, 600 more cars, you know, we've got an issue there with roads. I also, the, the farm, I get the runoff right through my yard right now. It goes down my ditch, under my driveway. So I obviously have a concern with the water, too. And, you know, I don't know what protocol is. You know, I've got another, there's some people here that I know are opposed to it and have signed a thing saying they're opposed to it because they live in the neighborhood. We don't know enough about it to, you know, just say, throw this out, but with, between water and traffic and they'd have to build it up and we're down, I'm just, we're just opposed to it. And like I say, I don't know if, if, if you're supposed to give this to you all or just say, we know there's opposition sitting in the room.
You can give it to-
Don't be acting like that part of the record-
And I also have a letter from UK about more on the Indian mounds. I don't know, I don't know if I need to submit that as well.
Yeah, we'll put it, we'll put it in the record.
Be assured that when they bring in the development plan, yes, there's 80 acres, but Mr. VanWinkle's going to lose a lot of acreage to roads, curb, gutter, sidewalks, entrances, exits. Twenty percent of the assets set aside is open space. So it's not going to be 300 houses. I don't know what it'll be till we see the development.
Sure. And we don't either, but that's just what we're hearing.
Developers lose a lot of land to all the infrastructure.
And, you know, Shady Oaks and Rose Trace is on the left side now, we'll have a huge development on the right side. At 7:30 school in the morning, it's going to be, Marbury Road's going to be pretty busy, so we just want to state that.
Okay, thank you, sir. So anyone else in the audience like to be recognized with maybe a different issue?
Chuck Givens, 1509 Redhouse Road.
Please raise your right hand.
Yes.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Continue, sir.
I've served on the Madison County Fair Board for 23 years. If you put the first picture you had up and see the housing developments around us already out there. We started out up here on the bypass. There is no county fairgrounds, it's owned by our board. We actually promote everything that's done for the county, for our children. As you can see, that's the only land left, and we're sitting in the middle of it. We were, like I said, on the bypass, now there's a Dodge dealership. We were just surrounded when the bypass came in. I don't know where you're going to go to have the next fairgrounds. If you swamp us, cover us up, we'll have to go to Irvin, Estill County. We, we moved out of town to make a place. And we, in 20 years, you can see the development on Rose's development across the road from us. And if this comes in behind, there'll be no place for the fairgrounds because the noise, I know right now we closed down with the ordinances at midnight or 11:30, whatever it is. And we abide by that, and there's a racetrack over there that I'm sure they abide by it as much as they can. If you go out there and stand, I'm not criticizing, I think I like Jack and Jay and they're friends of mine, but the fairgrounds is something we need. And if you just swamp us again, I don't know where we move to next. You're going to cover us up. That's all I have. Thank you all.
Did you say that the fairground is not owned by the county?
No, sir. The county actually, the judges that we've had in the past have always helped in their ways. They come out and they help grade the road, driveways, things like that, but it's privately owned by the board. The first time I went on a fairgrounds, 1976, and I went up there at the old fairgrounds and I was pretty, when I left, just in shambles. I thought, I'm going to check this deed at the courthouse, and it was owned by a group of men that started by a group that was trying to prepare a place for our future. And the first statement their attorney made was, "There's no future in farming." Well, if you take all the farms away, there'll be no future for sure. You can ask the Chinese. That's all I'm saying. You've got to leave something. All the places I traveled to, Virginia, that have places that have been saved, and it's beautiful, it's there. Madison County still has that in places, but drive around, we're losing what we have quick. And that's why you are here. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Rachel Noble. I live at 2012 Sea Hero Court in Richmond.
Okay, raise your hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, ma'am, go ahead.
I just want to bring out, I was just approved earlier for Runyon Grove, so thank you so much. But I also own property on Dunbar, and I just want to bring up the fact that this is going to increase the traffic out into our rural communities, once they figure out that you can get to this property from those more rural areas on the other side of the bypass. And those roads are small and they're highly populated already, so I just want to point that out for the record.
Okay, thank you. Anyone on the commission have anything to say before we actually make this? Yes, sir.
Brian Profit of 143 Shady Oaks Drive in Richmond.
Okay, raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
First, I will apologize if I sounded out of order earlier. This gentleman appears to have a lot to add to the meeting, and I couldn't hear him clearly. I was just suggesting if there was a microphone. That's all I meant, and I'm sorry. I could, there are a few things I could mention. For example, the fact that 52 going west is pretty much unpassable from 4:30 to 6:00 PM as it is today. If you do any traffic study, that's already clear. I could mention that, forget whatever was written in a book, the University of Kentucky has documented the Indian mound, so the book is really not the issue. I could mention silent intimidation from a developer and his attorney standing here while the rest of us are seated and invited to refute whatever we say. But I don't think any of those are necessarily the real issue. We all daily read stories about parts of Kentucky that are impoverished, because when times were good, they overbuilt. If I can just stretch a metaphor, the Bluegrass Depot is Madison County's coal mine. Five years from now, 1,000 jobs are going to go away. Yeah, building right now is great, and I am all for the growth of this area. I love this area. I want us to grow, but we, if we don't do it responsibly, we're going to be in serious trouble just five years from now. Folks, I want us to grow. I do. I am not against development. There's a brand new development, my property is, I could also stipulate, my property's on this map, but I wasn't invited to this hearing. But just on the other side of 52, there's a brand new develop, development already going up. There's tons of new housing there. I love growth, but folks, please, in your positions, you are called to do it responsibly. Because if five years from now, 10 years from now, we're hurting because we've got a ton of empty homes and property values have gone down meteorically, it'll be because we didn't think ahead. Yes, let us grow, but please, please, let us be responsible about how we do it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience might have a different view?
My name is Bobby Jones. My address is 1330 Marbury Road.
Okay, raise your right hand. Sir, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Continue.
I come because I oppose the development, the change, mainly due to safety, the traffic concerns there, water runoff, as Jason said, is particularly bad there. We've got a culvert between my house and my neighbor Mark Smith. It's heavily damaged now, that just floods his front yard, keeps mine quite wet, especially through the spring, and any kind of runoff we really get stays pretty wet for quite a bit of time. A lot of times, we can't even mow our yards for weeks, months at a time. Also, like I said-
Now, this water coming off of the land that they're asking for a zone change?
Yes, right across on the opposite side of the road. It runs off that, through the culvert, floods his yard, keeps mine quite wet most of the time. Jason's also, like he said, he gets all, he gets a lot of runoff as well. Also have a concern that many of the people in the subdivisions behind us that I've talked to did not get any kind of notification. While they're not on Marbury Road as well, the ones I've spoken to are opposed to it, but just many only found out about it last night when we started going through the subdivision talking to people. So I have a concern there, but-
Bert, I think that doesn't the code say we have to notify all adjacent?
We may all statutory require notifications. I mean, we can't send a letter to everybody in a five-mile radius.
But it's a adjacent problem.
We're required to do a certain number of notifications, and we're also required to put a sign up and advertisement in the paper, so we did what we were required.
I understand those things. I've got a picture of the sign today that you can't hardly even read it. Again, I got a copy of the letter. While statutorily, those people that are affected, will be affected, did not get noticed as well, I mean, until now. So I think they have an opportu, should have an opportunity to voice their concerns as well. And I know that today is the first reading or notification, but again, I think they should be given a little more ample time. Safety-
Well, that's what that Bobby, if this board approves it, or this board, it has to go to the fiscal court two times. So it's about that being all, okay?
I understand.
Okay.
Also, the traffic safety, I will not, my family and I will not even go out and take Charlie Norris Road now because of the size of it and the heavy traffic goes through there. I don't even feel it's safe to go out Charlie Norris, let alone 52 adding numerous homes onto Marbury Road will make that safety a lot more, more difficult there. 52, like he said, this gentleman said, between 4:30 and 6 o'clock, it's, it's a nightmare. And it bottlenecks right there at the, or 52, the Dollar General and the ordinance come together. So traffic safety is a big concern. There've been a lot of wrecks right there at that stoplight, so I just want to go on record saying those things.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience may have a different view?
Darlene Noble.
Yes.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth. My concern is in-
Hold on a minute, let me swear your hand.
Okay.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I have a question, or maybe a concern, and Ms. Mianchi has said that it hasn't been decided, but I was just wanting to say how many houses can be per acre when sewer is available would create a huge amount of housing. That's my concern, because I do live at 185 Dunbar, and we're narrow, and once people finds that you can go from Marbury to Todd to 4 Mile, Dunbar to Union City Road, you're right there at 75. So that's my concern, is that there's not a four to six houses per acre allowed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. You want to respond to that, Doc? Okay, I'll respond to that if the doctor wants to. All these issues that you're bringing up are part of the, if we approve it as a development, as part of a preliminary plan, and they'll all be addressed, there will not be four houses per acre, because you have, like the doctor said, you have to have roads, you have to have drainage, you have to have setbacks, there's all kinds of things. So, I mean, we don't know for sure how many can get on that without, they produce a platform to look at. But all that process is something that you all can come and be part of, have input on. But all these issues you're bringing up, that's, we address every one of those issues at every preliminary plat that we review, so I appreciate all your all's input, and I have time for one more before I call for a vote or a motion. Yes, ma'am? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Erin Saylor. I live at 1283 Marbury Road.
Okay, please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Continue, ma'am.
My husband and I own almost three acres on Marbury Road, and I'm basically gonna, I wanted to go on record that we opposed the zone change. I'm really going to probably reiterate most of the issues that have been brought up, but the back part of our almost three acres is continuously underwater, and that is due to the runoff and the flooding from the farm that they're proposing to build on. So our concern is water runoff. 52, traffic is, is another important one for us. If there's, let's say, 50 more homes built, it's going to increase that traffic at those rush hour times, and also on Marbury Road. It is, that road is in pretty bad condition as it is. Traffic is terrible. We have four small children, and safety is a huge concern for us on that road. As far as the fairgrounds, the fairgrounds are pretty important to us. Our four children are pretty involved with 4H and agriculture, and I would hate to see that leave our, our area, because it is important for our youth to be involved in that. I'm also an employee at the Bluegrass Army Depot, and the projected timeline for the finishing of the D-mill of the chemical weapons is 2023. So when that project wraps up, there will be lots of people leaving Madison County, so we are concerned with the vacancy that, that will impact our area pretty significantly. It'll be anywhere from 1,000 to probably 2,000 jobs that will be null and void, so.
That's assuming that all these people that work out there have homes. They may be living apartments or-
That, that is correct, but I think with the location being adjacent to the D-mill access gate, it, it probably is targeting those type of people. And then the, the last concern was ours, there was a sign posted up for a zone change. It was pretty strategically placed on a fence behind some bushes, and, and my opinion was-
I'd like to say with that, I wanted to put the sign up, and I did, I did the best I could.
Okay, well, I just wanted that to be-
There wasn't anything strategic about it.
Okay, okay. Well, that's all I have, sir.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Any commission members have anything to add?
If I may just briefly, I just wanted to submit for the record the research that we found, and again, reiterate, we're not for certain that an Indian mound is there. The description says six miles outside of the city of Richmond, but what, what we did find, I just want to put in the record to say it had been excavated and, and destroyed, and also show the adjoining plat that shows a mound there.
About the burial mound?
Yes.
The information about the burial mound?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to call Jack VanWinkle back up. I think I can do that, can't I?
Yep.
Mr. VanWinkle, you can stand, you're still under oath.
I do, sir.
Are you using the land now for agriculture? Is there, I mean, has there been, I was out there today looking at it, and it looks like there's a nice, fairly decent barn on it, but I didn't see much agriculture other than maybe some hay.
That's all that's on it, sir.
No crops or?
Nothing.
Has there been cattle on it lately or?
My father had cattle on it last year, but there's no cattle on it. It's just vacant land.
Okay. Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
You have some land back here.
You need to say something, Dan? Do you realize you're just under oath?
Yes, sir. Just like to address a few of the technical issues that have been brought up. Obviously, the Indian mound is a concern. We've addressed that. Typical things, any zone change, everyone worries about traffic and drainage, that's always there. All the infrastructure has been brought to this property by development. Six-inch water line, 20-foot blacktop road, Marbury Road's probably- black top road, Marbly Road's probably one of the flattest, straightest roads in this county, it looks like a racetrack through there, it's flat and perfectly straight, so, with the six inch water line, the, excuse me?
It is, it is 20 foot wide, though.
It is 20 foot wide, all the way past Shady Oaks entrance, yes, sir, I think the regs require turn lanes, anytime you have over 50 lots to the entrance, so that would be addressed, again, at the preliminary stage, we've already discussed retention ponds, we plan on oversizing those, we know Marbly in general is a terrible drainage area, so we plan on oversizing our ponds to try to alleviate anything, this farm's kind of at the top of the drainage area, so, everything is going from us to other places, we're fully aware, gonna try to address those, as far as the adjacent roads, Dunbar Lane, Charlie Norris, you could say those things about, any development on that side of the county eventually can go through those, I feel like we have all, all infrastructure in place.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Any commission members have anything else to add, or any comments? Yes, sir, I have time for one more. Please state your name and address for the record.
Steve Riley, 312 Peachtree Drive, Brea, Kentucky.
Hey, Mr. Riley, still understands you're under oath?
Okay.
From your previous statement, okay, go ahead.
Okay, well, they stated that there was no agriculture out there on that farm, they've always been cattle on that farm, right now's the only time that there's not been any cattle on that farm, we, that's what my daddy done was farm, and I did too, I have farmed for 50 years, I'm just 61, but I started when I was six years, well, eight years old, but I actually started before then, working on farm, so it's always been agriculture, and as far as the Indian mound goes, they're talking about somebody piled dirt up there or something from a pond, there's not been no dirt piled up there from no pond, it's been that way for 73 years, it's been in my family, and talk about there's an Indian mound field on the other side of the road, well, there's an Indian mound over there, it should still be over there, we ought to check and see if it's over there, I mean, that is an Indian mound, and I, I'm a Christian man, and I'll, I'll state my life that's an Indian mound.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, we've heard testimony from the audience, and from the developer, and the property owner, any of the commission members have anything to add?
We have one more to add there, do you want to...
No, we've had, we've listened, they're all about the same issues, if not, then I'll open up a floor for a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we tabled this issue, I think there's some issues come up that we need to look at, we probably need to look at to make sure the roads are adequate, we need to, they need to clear up about the Indian barrel mound, and give us a little more time to look at the property, and I would like to go out, maybe in some of the business time, busiest time, and see some of its traffic issues, that's always been a concern of this commission, and I think that it deserves our attention, but I'd like to make a motion that we tabled, and hear it in 30 days. Have a motion and a second?
I'd like, I'd like to go with you when you go, I think it'd be nice if several of us could go at the same time and discuss it while we're out there.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, we'll have a vote.
Colin Hatfield.
Yes.
Doug Fritz.
Yes.
Shannon Pennington.
Yes.
Robert Farmer.
Yes.
Paul Mialci.
I'm going to vote yes, and I'm going to tell you why, in the comprehensive plan, it says the planning process is dependent upon input from both public and the private sector to guide and plan for positive smart growth, in the future of Madison County, smart growth involves urban planning and transportation theories that concentrate growth in the center of cities and avoid urban sprawl, and advocates compact, transit-oriented, walkable, bicycle-focal-friendly land use, including neighborhood schools, compact streets, and mixed-use developments with a range of housing choices. Smart growth values long-range regional considerations over, of sustainability, over short-term focus. Comprehensive plan also says in its future goals, and we're supposed to be developing the comprehensive plan now, provide a range of housing opportunities, maintain the current, maintain a current inventory of vacant lots throughout the county to protect against premature development or overdeveloping land and encouraging fill-in of the existing subdivisions, we still have a lot of open lots in Madison County, so the question of the comprehensive plan would be, is, is this premature development, so yes, I favor tabling it until we look at the issues of smart growth.
Andrew Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, so ladies and gentlemen, we have tabled this to 30 days, we can take some of these issues that you've brought up, we usually address all those with a preliminary plat, but I wasn't real clear, and we're aware of the traffic situation out there, but we'll take a look at that, and we'll vote on a motion at our next business session.
Can we not require a development plan as well, see how many houses he's gonna put on?
Probably not required for that.
We don't want to ever do a development plan.
Well, he ought to have an idea of how many houses he wants to put on it, don't he?
The reg will determine that based on the zone.
And the water issues, too, yeah, okay, okay. So, this will go to the, I guess fiscal court has tabled, so they won't have to take any action, it'll come back to us?
They might get an improvement motion.
Okay, 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 is there any business coming before the commission?
All we got.
Yeah, if not, then the motion will be in order to adjourn.
Do you hear that, Bert?
We're not, we're not required to re-exercise, y'all, I just want to mark the calendar, business session is always the third, two, of the month, whatever, I won't be late in there.
Okay, we need, we got a motion and a second to adjourn, you go ahead, call roll.
Doug Fritz.
Yes.
Shannon Pennington.
Yes.
Robert Farmer.
Yes.